Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Tunison.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Thank you. Reports from state and county officials. I do not see any state and county officials with us. And just as a side note, we had initially scheduled Sheriff Leaf to do a presentation on his election investigation. Because of the interest in that event, it is being rescheduled. We're looking for a different venue. So Sheriff Leaf will not be here today talking about the election investigation. That will be at a later date. So I apologize for that if not everybody was made aware of that through the media. Limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes. Going once.
Good morning. Written by our cell hardware master of the podunk leggat club. I don't know if I use the leggat club or whether this is finally working, but yes, please speak into the microphone or use your outdoor voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Additional public comment? Hearing none. Approval of the written agenda. At this time, any member of the board may ask for an item to be removed from the consent agenda and placed under items for consideration. Hearing no such request. Does any commissioner wish to change the agenda additionally? Hearing no such request. The agenda is approved as written. Various correspondence. Does any commissioner have correspondence they'd like to share with the board?
I have one, Mr. Chair. So I think Monday I received an email from a concerned citizen regarding the animal shelter. It was an animal brought in late Friday night and it was in really bad shape. And over the course of the weekend, the employee down there was sending texts to the director, but it really wasn't portraying, as far as the director felt, how bad the animal condition was. So over the course of the weekend, it got worse and by Monday the animal passed away. So it was in bad shape. It had, it ended up having parvo. Somebody had not given it vaccinations or anything. So after contacting Morgan and the director down there and Michael's talked to everybody about this, they've implemented a new emergency thing because everybody was kind of under the impression that nothing could be done for seven days at all. But in a case of emergency, they've implemented a new protocol so that they can actually go down the checklist and if it's got a lot of these different problems, then should be made aware of it and they can do an emergency vet visit or whatever they need to do. So this is a, I make a clarification that needed to be made as far as what they can do and what they can't do. Because it was a seven day hold on the animal where you really can't do a whole lot because until they're trying to contact the owner or whatever, they can't do, you know, a lot of things. So this hopefully helps that situation and I know Morgan's really concerned about it. So I hope it helps us, maybe shed a little light on this.
Awesome. We did hear about that. So good information. Additional correspondence? Okay, hearing none. We'll move ahead with our consent agenda. Commissioner Tunison.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Animal approval of January 23, 2024. Board of Commissioners, move the minutes.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Tunison, support by Hatfield for all items listed on the consent agenda. Discussion is not allowed and a roll call vote is required. All those in favor, vote aye. Opposed, vote nay. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Getty.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Yes.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Presentations, we have none. Public hearings, we have none. Items for consideration, Commissioner Smoker.
Mr. Chair, I move for approvals of transfers and disbursements, approval of prepaid invoices in the amount of $3,391,064.71.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Smoker, support by Getty for approval of prepaid invoices in the amount of $3,391,064.71. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Smoker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
I move for the approval of claims in the amount of $51,473.61.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Smoker, support by Tunison for approval of claims in the amount of $51,473.61. Discussion. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Hatfield.
Yes.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of Commissioner's reimbursement mileage in the amount of $701.19.
Is there support?
Support, Campbell.
Motion by Smoker, support by Campbell for approval of Commissioner reimbursement mileage in the amount of $701.19. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the proposed map change A-124 for Castleton Township to create zoning districts for the Village of Nashville.
Is there support?
Support, Campbell.
Motion by Smoker, support by Campbell for approval of the proposed map change A-124 for Castleton Township to create zoning districts for the Village of Nashville. Discussion. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. So this is the culmination of the process of transferring the administrative functions from the Village of Nashville to the county. We had to create zoning maps to amend the village or Castleton Township zoning to include the Village of Nashville. And we set up the zoning district. You have a copy of that in the colorized map that identifies all the different properties and all the different zoning classifications. So it includes everything from the medium density residential, which would include things like apartments and duplexes, regular houses, to even having ag property and rural residential to allow for chickens and whatever other types of farm animals might be allowed outside the outskirts of the village. So A1 is the Castleton side and we'll eventually get to A2, which is the Maple Grove side.
Questions from Commissioners?
And I will say that the village did provide us with a basis and a guideline to create this map.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Tunison.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the proposed map change A-224 for Maple Grove Township to create zoning districts for the Village of Nashville.
Is there support?
Support, Campbell.
Motion by Smoker, support by Campbell for approval of the proposed map change A-224 for Maple Grove Township to create zoning districts for the Village of Nashville. Additional discussion? Additional questions?
I guess I have one. Now, the Village of Nashville came to you and wanted this done, I take it?
Correct. Yeah. So they've, they've already gone through the process. They went through their 425 agreements with the townships. Both have approved it. So this is all ready to go. We expect to take over March 1st.
Awesome. Additional discussion or questions?
Because they've never had zoning over there, right?
No, they've had it. So yeah, we have a, we have a starting point or a baseline like for violations that will, that will work for their information.
Okay. Further questions? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Getty.
Aye.
Smoker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
The motion is approved.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Good luck with your new adventure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval to confirm the appointment of David Hatfield, Michael Carlton, David Jackson, and Catherine Getty to serve on the Personnel and Human Services Standing Committee as recommended by Board Chair.
Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Smoker, support by Getty for approval to confirm the appointment of David Hatfield, Michael Carlton, David Jackson, and Catherine Getty to serve on the Personnel and Human Services Standing Committee as recommended by the Board Chair. Discussion.
I think this is a really good thing. We need to get moving on a direction that we can start a search for, try to fill the shoes of that man over there in the corner and a lot of other things that we need to accomplish.
There'll be a lot.
Corner.
Choose your corner wisely.
Apologize about that, Sheriff.
So additional discussion? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Smoker.
Aye.
Hatfield.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Tunison.
Aye.
Getty.
Aye.
Jackson.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, we have none. County administrators, report. Chairpersons, report. I am all set. Also, vice chairs, report.
Just a couple of things. Solid Waste Committee met last week. They are dealing with some new state requirements that are still evolving, but that will in all likelihood require some realignment in the Solid Waste Oversight Committee or the creation of a parallel committee to comply with the new state requirements. More on that to come shortly. They have finalized the collection dates for this year. We still have funding available through this year to cover that. Those dates will be May 18th and September 7th. Also attended the Hastings City Council meeting last night. They had received a number of calls about the animal shelter issue that we'd previously heard about. I think that what has taken place will help them address some of those issues. So hopefully they understand that it's not their responsibility, but since it's located in the city, yeah, they still get a lot of communication on that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Getty.
I echo Commissioner Hatfield's report on South Solid Waste Oversight Committee. Been working on that. I'll let Commissioner Smoker report on Thornapple Township as he was the official commissioner there last night. And then we have Health Department coming up this week and that's it.
Awesome. Commissioner Smoker.
Attended Thornapple Township with Catherine. We tagged team room last night. So, and they did pass a resolution on the Second Amendment. And then I went on to the Village of Freeport and we do have a, out at 911, we're going to have an open house. And I believe it's February 20th. But I will make sure them dates and times get out.
February 20th, like 5 to 7 or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay. I remember talking about that. So, all right, perfect. That is correct. 5 to 7 on February 20th?
Yes.
Cookies and punch?
I, that's not mine.
Commissioner Campbell.
Thank you. I did attend the CAA this week, Monday. That was a makeup meeting, I believe. Anyway, they had some commissioner named Campbell that they had to reappoint for another year. So he successfully got reappointed. It was a close one. Also, I was over at Thornapple and DHS in Harvest Point over there has been a little slow with residents coming in, but they've noticed a significant increase now. So they're filling up fast over there. They're very pleased with that. And we are.
That's what I have. Thank you. Commissioner Tunison.
Attended Carlton last night Township and there's been discussion between the Birch Board, which is the fire departments, all the townships, five townships, as to whether to turn it over to the city and just pay the 1.25 mil to the city and turn over all the vehicles. I think they've kind of unanimously, all the townships want to stay in their own lane and have their own Birch Board. So each board had to approve or whatever. So Carlton last night approved the fact that they'll stay in Birch and have separate than with the city. It's just, that was just an ongoing thing that they've been trying to figure out how to, how to fund everything between the, and now that they're doing the 1.25 mil, they'll, they'll have money being pulled away for new vehicles and stuff like that. That was always a problem before is that they, they didn't have any money to replace vehicles. So I would come up with a plan and it seems to be a pretty good plan. And it sounds like Birch will stay intact and it's probably a good thing. Each township will be represented that way.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, limited public comment. At this time, any member of the public wishing to address the board may do so for up to three minutes. This was supposed to be here to you last week. I forgot all about it. Do we give it to you now or do you want to? Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
Also, 24th of this month, we have the Church Security Summit. Be up at the First Baptist in Middleville. We've done that several years in a row. And this year we have Lieutenant Colonel Dave Grossman coming in to talk to the church groups. I don't know if you guys are familiar with him, but he's kind of a go-to guy for law enforcement. He has several books out there on like violence and one of his books is Stop Teaching Our Kids to Kill. And he's a former Army Ranger and he's got his PhD in psychology and that's his specialty is why people want to go and kill each other. And that's his, he'll be our keynote speaker. If you guys want to come on in, come on in and listen to him. I'm sure you won't be disappointed.
What were the, it's the dates, February 24th. What are the times for that?
All day. The summit's all day. We had different breakout sessions and stuff like that. We do everything from, oh yeah, Jim, you had to run there doing the, I forget what that's called now.
Emergency management?
Yeah, well, Resident Emergency Management, how to basically make your room more secure from, keep people from entering and all that stuff. I forgot the name of that. There's an acronym to it. But then we have, somebody actually comes in and teaches some actual hands-on self-defense, how to take somebody down if they're armed or out of control to protect your people around you. We also have somebody in there who talks about how to calm somebody down from wanting to do that. So we got a whole plethora of things that we've been teaching for quite a few years for the churches.
Is there a website for that? I know there was in the past.
I'll get that to you. I'll text that to you.
Okay, awesome. Do you have to pre-register?
We prefer that, yes. So that way we know how many people are coming and how much food and all that to get.
Is there a cost for it?
This year, I don't think there was. We do ask for donations because that's how we afford to bring in somebody like the caliber of Lieutenant Colonel Dave Grossman.
Awesome. Press on.
All right. January, correction staff booked 93 persons into the jail and at least 109 back into the community. The average population was 59 persons. Staff transported 74 inmates to and from various locations, court, medical facilities, and other counties. Medical facilities also includes dentist offices, by the way. In addition, we fingerprinted 87 persons in front of the front counter, kitchen before, excuse me, 4,986 meals. And that'd cost about $2.73 per meal. And going back five years, bookings was 93 and 2019 was 243. Releases, 109 compared to 177. Daily average population was 59 and 2019 was 80. Transports was 74 compared to 102 in 2019. Public prints, 87 compared to 65 in 2019. Meals served was 4,986 and 2019 was 7,361 at $1.50 a meal. Can you hear me okay? Okay, all right. Plumbing repairs, we had $2,588.26. HVAC repairs was $470. Flip side of that, law enforcement, we logged 688 complaints. 17 individuals are arrested. 95 accidents were handled. 30 involved deer. One involved alcohol or drugs. 342 criminal histories were run for warrant entry and warrant requests. 77 sex offenders were processed. 271 pistol licenses were processed. Going to 2024 compared to 2019, 688 compared to 682. Accidents handled 95 compared to 109. 2024 car deer was 30, 2019 was 41. Arrests, 17. 2019 was 42. And alcohol and drug related arrests was three compared to seven. I'm going to be sending you a video. It's kind of been a hot topic. My phone's kind of blowing up on it. This is sheriff out of Butler County in Ohio, Sheriff Jones. He attended the National Sheriff's Conference. And he's got a message for everybody. It's stuff that we've been looking at for quite a few years. Basically, the director of the FBI come on in and addressed the sheriffs down there. And just for us to be more prepared and mentally prepared especially, they said there's more red flags going on right now when it comes to terrorism than what there was before 9/11. And they also brought on that they're not going to be messing with our federal elections like they have in the past. Now they're also going to be targeting local. So just for all you clerks out there, be alert. And I'm not sure what the attack is going to be. We're not sure if there is even going to be one, but they're telling us to be high alert. So I'll send you that video. I think I have everybody in my little loop. Do I? And I got you, you, you. Do I have you on there?
I don't think so.
All right. I'll get you on there and I know I got you. All right. Any questions?
One question, off topic. I knew some of the new gun laws went into effect this month. Are there any significant changes? As far as you see locally, I know there's changes for storage of guns and things like that when there are youth in the house. Any changes to buying or selling firearms or pistols?
Major change is if you wanted to buy a gun off of John, you're going to have to go get a background checked. We, it's not a registration. You just got to come in and get that background check, much like you would for a pistol registration. But the difference is a pistol registration, you're going to bring back the serial number and the make model of that pistol to get registered, the long one not. And if John, you sell that to him, you're going to keep that for your records. Say, no, I sold it to somebody who passed a background check.
Does that go for long guns?
That's long guns, yes.
ARs, pistols, everything. So if I want to sell a shotgun, or John wants to sell me a shotgun, same thing. I've got to get a permit or a background check to buy the weapon.
Right.
Even if you have a concealed carry permit?
That one, that may be an exemption, but for right now, I'm going to say I am not 100% sure on that. So there's some other stuff in there too. The red flag went into effect. Most of that we've been able to do for years. And that's like if somebody suicidal or you know, somebody that was talking about shooting up a place or something like that, you can give us the information and we'll go out and handle it immediately. The difference is, and we're double checking on this to make sure it's still in the law. They were saying that any judge in the state could make an order over here. That I'm comfortable with because we know our people over here. But what that would do is that triggers us to do an immediate investigation on something like that. That's how we're going to handle stuff like that. So do us go out and have a judge from Chippewa County do an order for us down here in Berry County to go confiscate somebody's guns? We're going to go, oh, wait a minute here. But we'll do the investigation. We'll get right on it. So other than that, there's some other things we're going to have to do to get prepared for just how we handle stuff at the front office.
Okay. Additional questions for the sheriff?
And what about gun shows? Will this put an end to gun shows?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I didn't know if, since how individuals go there and sell guns.
All right. What I'm thinking is going to happen is, is people have to come in and get a purchase permit before they go to the gun show. And I don't know if they're going to be allowing somebody at the gun show to do them there. I don't know.
How long are those permits good for?
I think it was a week. So you had to buy something within a week. Otherwise you had to go get another one. And with the CPL, where that CPL is kind of handy, as we know, if you've been naughty and you got a CPL because they're going to take your CPL away from you. So that was one of our arguments with Michigan Sheriff's Association that, all right, why don't we exempt those people there? Because you've already had the background. You had a very thorough background check with fingerprints and checking our records to see if you've been naughty in our records and all that. So if you had a violation of law, that your CPL is more than likely going to be taken away. So why not allow the CPL? So we'll double check into that and we'll go from there.
But this isn't gonna change if you want to go to buy a gun at L.A. Pete's or Bob's Gun Tackle?
Yeah, you can do everything they tell you to do there.
Yeah. You don't have to get a purchase permit to go and buy a firearm there.
That's in question right now, right now. They, see, most of what they do is under federal.
Yeah.
The ATF. ATF's going, we don't want anything to do with that.
But they're a licensed dealer. So I mean, why would you have to go to purchase permit to go?
That's a good question. All these arguments we made when we were arguing with the Michigan Sheriff's Association, or I can't say arguing, but bringing up those points to the committee that was working on these red flag laws. And I have yet to see anything come from the state across my desk laying it out for us like they normally do. I've yet to see anything come out. Everything I've been getting is from, like, gun organizations, like Michigan Coalition of Responsible Gun Owners. The Michigan Sheriff's Association has a video that they presented, but it wasn't anything directly from the state. That was from our Sheriff's Association. So it's been really kind of odd way to handle things. Yes?
When we renew a CPL, does the background check redone every time you renew?
If it expires, yes. But if it does not expire, let's say you, because six months before it expires, you have to go through some training, and it's four hours of training, three hours classroom, one hour on the range. Okay? If you get that done in time, no, there's no fingerprints.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Limited public comment. Additional limited public comment.
I saw Dan Patton out there, and I know he was gonna come in.
Dan Patton, enter and sign in, please.
You're up.
You're up.
I heard him snoring.
Uh, yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. I want to take a quick second of your time. We lost one of our staff people last week. Excuse me, Ronnie Felder, longtime maintenance employee, a part-time employee for us. Been with us about 13 years. Unfortunately, had some health issues and just couldn't battle through those. He passed away last week, as indicated. I don't know any arrangements. Obviously, keep his family, Margaret, his wife, and kids, and your thoughts and prayers. I know he'll be buried at some point at Fort Custer National Cemetery, so just wanted you out there.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Additional public comment? Hearing none. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Getty. Commissioner Smoker.
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Tunison.
So everybody night at the solar, then, if they want to come tonight at 6 o'clock.
Commissioner Campbell.
I have nothing.
Commissioner Hatfield. Okay. As was pointed out, tonight at 6 o'clock in the Hastings Performing Arts Center, we are doing, it'll be a good agenda with our, with Jim McManus there talking about planning and zoning issues, with our attorney going over the law, with what we can and can't do. We've got a gentleman from MSU Extension coming in to talk about some of the things, a lot of the questions that people have about solar in relation to glare, screening, toxicity, just a lot of things that people have questions on solar, so it'll be good to hear from him. We also have a gentleman coming in from Citizens for Local Choice. They are sponsoring the petition drive to get it on the ballot in November. So if it's, they need like 360,000 signatures, 365,000 signatures to get it on the ballot. So he's a commissioner for Lenawee County, and he'll be doing a brief presentation with some information on how to get involved and help that, because the only way we get local control back is if something like that passes. Because right now, the state's taking over all control as of the end of November, so that is an opportunity. At least someone's thinking about that broadly. Sheriff?
You said something about attorney. What attorney is that?
Um, bum-bum-bum.
Brad Fowler.
From Micah Myers.
Can I get contact information for him? So I have information for him, he's gonna need.
Okay. I'm sure Michael has it, and will get it to you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, Micah Myers. Yep. So, and then we'll have, there'll be dialogue between the board and our speakers throughout the evening, but we also are gonna have an open mic for questions from the public. And then we will also have public comment at the end, because the reason we're doing this is so everybody can be on the same page and learn about this, but then also, we want to hear from the people in those areas. You know, and as Mr. McManus had pointed out to us, that there have been inquiries in almost, I think he said, 14 out of the 16 townships already for solar. So it's not just a Johnstown Township issue, it's a county-wide issue. So we expect some good dialogue, some good information, and you're all invited. So without that, we are done with our agenda. Thank you for coming this morning. We are adjourned.